This conference will now be recorded.
Afternoon. Welcome to the City of Zephrahell CRA meeting for Monday, February 24, 2025. Ricardo, may we have the roll call?
Yes, sir. Steven Spina.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson. Lance Smith.
Here.
Kenneth Burgess. Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is citizen comments. Do we have any comments from anyone that's not attached to item on the agenda? Carlos, do you have any? Ricardo, do you have anything?
I have none that signed up.
Wrong with me.
I do it all the time, man.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right, first item is, the next item is approval of the CRA minutes of January 13, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve them.
Second.
Any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no ayes. Item two. Approval of the CRA meetings. Seventh.
Approval, second.
Aye.
Aye. Remember, the motion. Point three, commercial improvement grant for 5131 Gaul Boulevard, Louis Amatorretti. Ms. Hamilton?
Yes, sir. So here is the building. You will remember this. The building has been changed multiple times in the last five or six years. The Amaretti's have a plan to improve the building that shows, this is their first little design. Can we go to the next one? With the front patio area, improving the building, creating a sunroom. Next one. This is kind of the look of, you know, one of the looks. We talked about. It's so close to the road that we needed to have some kind of barrier so that people would know that it was there and people that were using it were comfortable. Next one. So we came up with a couple of designs. I say we, the Amaretti's came up with a couple of designs for trying to create some kind of barrier. But the big thing for the grant is the is that it will be an outdoor seating area. The grant also involves the interior improvements, but most of it is on the exterior. And we're trying to, what the CRA grant is for is to improve the value of the building. They are putting $77,000 worth of improvements into the building to make it more commercially viable. We've had a restaurant, a grocery store, a billiards. None of those things worked. And so these additions, we think, will make it more economically viable. The estimate is in your packet from the contractor. It meets all of the grant requirements. The CRA passed the commercial improvement grant for projects just like this. We are trying to increase the value of the building and increase the economic viability of it. So it meets all of the grant requirements. Staff recommends approval.
I have a question. So on that, where the porch is, I noticed that too earlier when I was looking at this, pretty close to the road, is there any kind of code that requires certain type of barrier when you're that close? Have you looked into that at all?
Well, now, remember, this is a drawing, so it
Right, but I mean
It's not as close as that drawing seems, but it is close. They have to stay out of DOT right of way. That's the, they're not allowed to go into the right of way.
As long as they're not in the right of way, then there probably nothing required.
That's correct.
Okay.
Could you go back, Ricardo, and show the three drawings look a little... So this is open air. This looks enclosed to me. Is that?
Yeah, the idea behind this is just to look at the barrier with the concrete.
Oh, the brick and that will be what you show, but that's not what they're doing.
That's correct.
They're doing the
These are just ideas that we came up with.
They're doing the third picture. Okay, that's what they like to do. But they'll probably have a brick.
Yes.
Where the
It won't be this elaborate with the stone and everything.
It won't.
That is correct.
It won't be.
It will not be this elaborate with the stone.
Okay, and it won't have the wrought iron. It'll have brick there.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's true. We know it's going to be brick?
Well, it's going to be concrete.
Okay. I just, I just don't want, because I hear the question.
Yeah, I don't want you to say something.
It'll be a solid concrete. Can you come here?
Sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The idea is to prevent, you know, because I know we are close to the road. So whatever is more, the appealing of that stone or brick, whatever looks better, that's what we're going to put there. But the main thing is just to prevent, you know, cars and people feel safe, you know, because it's something behind. That's the only, that's the only purpose. But if it's, if it's in the, when we work the numbers, basically, we had the idea to put a stone or brick, which is kind of the same. But I mean, if the stone is better, and I mean, I really like the stone, but whatever is convenient for the city. I don't just want to change. I want to, you know, try to keep it in the city.
And the CRA requires it to being, you know, we, if it's a fence, it has to be aluminum metal.
Well, I'm thinking kind of of what's in front of checkers. They kind of have a brick.
They have a brick and a black
And, yeah, that's kind of what, anyway, okay. I just want to be clear that it's, that's not really what you're doing, but it's, it's the dimension kind of thing.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, and I don't have, I have an issue with this. I think it's, I think it's a good improvement. The only part I have an issue with is there's not specifics to it. We don't know if it's brick. We don't know if it's block. I don't know how a contractor puts a price on something like that without knowing what it's going to be.
What they did was concrete, just concrete.
Block.
Block border, a concrete border.
So, so really, I mean, I mean, and I just think that it gives too much leeway for interpretation showing us many different things. Show us what it's going to be.
Okay.
You go right ahead. Okay, so the contractor, he understands is concrete. You know, it's just like a, it's a block.
Hmm.
Now, the face is just the cosmetic part, the decoration part, which you can put brick or you can put stone. It's just the look. But behind that is the concrete.
Right.
The maintenance. So the price is on the concrete. That's what I was saying. You know, he made a good point. If we want to go with brick, the stone and the brick are pretty much the same. It's just the finish on the face.
And then the only thing that it doesn't talk about is what type of roof structure is it going to be? I mean, is it going to be a canopy? Is it going to be a metal canopy? Is it going to be an awning? Is it going to be, you know, what's roof going to be like?
Okay, so the, right now, the way that we have it, okay, and the canopy is going to be wood. But it was not in specifics because we don't know what it's going to be approved for, okay? So I just know something that I want is what the city wants.
It's got to go to building. Building, it'll have to meet building code.
Right, so
Sure.
Me personally, I'm just trying to find something that will match with checkers, match with other stores. That way, we don't have anything is different, you know, for what you already have here in the city. So, I don't know, wood or aluminum is an issue.
So I think what you're saying is you need to make sure that what we're approving is what's being done and you don't have enough information on what's being done.
I mean, it could be an aluminum awning, for all I know. Which I don't think that any of us are real crazy about.
Well, it says enclosed sunroom installation, so I'm assuming that's the canopy and all that. Yeah, I think we want to make sure it's not just, Commissioner Smith wants to make sure it's not just a... Would this $20,000 be added on to or included in the $77,000?
The $77,000 and then the 20 on top of that. So it's $90,000 that's going to be invested.
That makes sense. I was thinking, there's a lot going on here for that, seeming to me.
And, and part of the reason that we've gone back and forth and presented it to you this way is they cannot start work until the grant is approved. And there were design choices, beautification choices, that had not been made yet. But if you tell us tonight what you will not accept, like an aluminum structure, you do not want an aluminum structure.
Ricardo, could you go back to the, I think it's the first picture, maybe?
I kind of liked the first one best because
If you look, if you look in the back of the building there, that's what we're talking about that we don't want is aluminum roof with three, four by four little post things. That's not what we would want on the front. Can you see it back there?
Yeah.
Right there in the back.
Right, that's, that's
Sure.
We're doing something more, you see, that's a complete, kind of like a, I mean, like a complete roof, you know, on the top. So it's no
Is it attached? I'm sorry. Does it attach to the building? And then there'll be, and that will be in the sidewalk also, so that'll be a pass through and then the tables and things.
So the, the idea is for the CRA, it has to be attached for it to increase the value of the property and, and so it will be attached.
And I don't have a, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good project, but I just don't think I have the level of detail that I need to, and I look at these a lot differently than just the residential grants, because we're talking about a $20,000 investment and it's something we need a little more, kind of like what the coffee shop had. They had interior drawings. They had pretty much in a detailed set of a bid document, or not bids, but it was a estimate with line item estimates. So it's, I mean
So you would rather have line item estimates?
Well, I just
I mean, this is only the second grant that we've done in the $20,000, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should expect a greater level of detail for the $20,000. That's just me, you know? But, I mean, because there's too much left for interpretation, they could do those structural aluminum panels and that's, that's a canopy, you know? I don't know that that's what we want, though, you know?
I understand. And I really would like to have something more specific. It's just every time, if you have an architect to design, go with the specific. That'd be another extra cost there that they are being spending money, which is already, you know, close to $100,000.
But you're going to have to have construction drawings either way. Anything you do, you're going to have to have construction drawings. Sure.
My question would be, what part, I know that's not a professional drawing or anything like that, but what part would you be, the city would be concerned for? What the, what the city is expecting?
I would ask, what's the roof made of? Is it a shingle roof? Is it, is it some type of a membrane roof? Is it metal roof?
I think he's asking, can you tell us what materials you're using for the roof, for the columns, for the a little more detail in terms of, I can see the concrete block kind of in there, but what are the posts going to be made of? What is the, what is the material you're using?
So, and then you want a line item?
Well, I mean, I just, I just hate it when it's like that, because there's, there's 100 different ways we can construct that.
Right. If it had on the side of it, you know, red brick post, aluminum this, if it had listed it out.
And if you showed, there was another picture that showed, it was like an opaque
Next page.
Keep, one, one more, or it was back, I think. There. Like that, I understand that. I know exactly what that's going to be. I wouldn't have a problem with that if it works for you, but that's not my call.
We were talking about the other, which is like more columns. You see the small columns? Very similar to the ones previous. You see, we were trying to place a nice, you know, maybe square or round columns, you know, bigger, more bold. Or we can just do it just like that, you know? Just like that would be fine with me.
Well, you, you would have to cover them.
I mean, I
Are you fine with that?
It's, to me, it's up to the, to your budget. It's up to your budget, you know? It's not up to me to tell you what it is, but I need more specification because I don't want to leave it open to interpretation, because that's when we get in trouble.
Can we, knowing what your concerns are, can we take that and at a staff level, if, get to this point to where we say
Mr. Amaretty.
I'm horrible with names. Mr. Amaretty says, hey, we're going to do this, but we're going to take those, you know, the bottom portion of the columns there, and we're going to bring them all the way up to the top because we want a thicker column. And this is the roof structure that we're going to have. And we bring that in as supporting, or he brings that back to staff as a supporting documentation. And we put that with this application. Is that something that would be acceptable to the, to the commission?
And I don't think, if you go back to, if you go back to the one that's a drawing, right there, the patio is out the front there, even if you just kind of, I mean, you're showing a little bit of like brick or decorative stone or something there that's not existing there now. Just even with the drawing like that, if we could see it and then list the materials, what they are.
I was thinking, maybe we could approve it and kind of put it on the building official to have him approve of the structural materials that are in use, that you know what would meet the code and be the best.
I can work with Calvin to do that.
I mean, that would be, to me, that would be, you understand?
Yeah, I mean, he could do whatever required by code. I mean, but we can't really specify what material they got.
No, he'll, he'll specify the material, but you would kind of sign off on it, saying that work with her on the, on the attachment and the material. Would that be all right?
I imagine something like that, a structure like that would be engineered to begin with, so we'd just go with that.
Can we go back to that picture, the one, the, no, the next one? The next one? The next one? That one? Okay, so I want to make sure I understand. So do you like that?
Yeah, I just like that because it shows me everything. It shows me what the columns are going to look like. Shows me the, the roof, what it's going to look like. That's why I like that one. I don't, it, it could be whatever. I mean, it's up to, it's up to your budget, you know?
This would meet the CRA standards.
So now we go by the material, but question, on this side here, where you see the fence, kind of like a fence, right? If we just make that brick, okay?
Or block. I mean, it doesn't matter, or block.
Or block.
Whichever.
Make that, that line, right? Maybe a little bit in this side too here, so that would, everything looks standard. Is that okay? All right, perfect. Okay, and everything else would be okay?
In Houston. Okay. But my question is, do the CRA commissioners feel good? Staff has been given direction that this is what he's going to do. Do you feel good and are confident enough to approve the grant?
I think I do, but I would like Calvin in the loop.
Okay.
I understand that he doesn't want to go to an architect and get, because that is going to increase his costs considerably. If you can come up with a rendering, like, you know, the drawing one there, and list the materials too, that, that would be the big help, because we can see it, like Commissioner Smith says, you can see that. You see the columns, you see the beams going across, you see the translucent roof and all that, so we kind of know what that is.
And remember, until it is completely done, have signs off on it, we don't pay Mr. Amaretty.
And, but we don't want to get you in that position, though. You know, we, we, we don't want to do that, so.
I think mainly, we want to make sure that it's sturdy and it's going to hold up through a hurricane.
What kind of timeframe are you on?
Well, I really like to have it in the next 60 days, okay? Because it's a decision I need to make if I want to keep the building or sell the building. So if it's not going to, I mean, from the business purpose.
Yeah.
That's what I'm here today to, to, you know, listen to your opinion and see if we move forward. I mean, it's $20,000. It's not $200,000.
Right.
For me, it's to make a decision. I want to move forward or
What, what are you going to, what's, what's going to go on in there? Is it going to be a restaurant or office?
Restaurant. It, it, the whole idea was to have a salon in there, like a beauty salon for women, only women in there. So they're going to have some kind of different type of stylish in there. And then they're going to have a small coffee shop, so people can sit there, wait, and then go inside. And that's basically what it is. It's not like a restaurant or anything. It's going to be like a coffee shop.
And, and for, again, for the CRA, it's the increase of value of the building. It's not about the business. It's about the increase in the value.
I just wondered, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I just wonder.
What I mean, it does increase the value of the building, because then let's say, for some reason, the salon doesn't stay there and you got a patio now. You could put a restaurant in. You already have it existing, so you're getting that you're getting that improvement, right?
Yeah, an improved parking lot, so improved electrical, everything. I'm sorry.
Probably not going to be, it looks here.
Not going to be that big.
Because that front part is kind of a tower type thing. It's smaller.
I mean, really and truly, this is
Yeah, just to clarify something, Commissioner Smith, you had mentioned that it was over the sidewalk. There may be a pass through. It'll be on the, the west side or the building side of that sidewalk. So the sidewalk's part of the right of way. So the, so the structure will be
It'll be right up to the building.
Yeah, it'd be from the building to the sidewalk. So the sidewalk will not be part of the project.
Picture looked like there was a gap there.
Yeah, the, I think there's a, I think that's just part of the drawing, doing the hand drawing, but it'll be to the west side of that sidewalk.
Yeah, and then the other one too, it was here, it looked like a gap to me, in the, in the hand drawn one, it looked like a gap. Okay, so the, that'll be right up to the building. The sidewalk will be in front of it.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, well, that's better.
Besides this patio, let's assume that I'm not doing anything with that patio. The building is stayed the way it is. The only thing we're improving is the appearance of the building, you know, like it's got two, three colors, so we're going to have a just standard color with, making it more modern. Just fix the parking lot, remove all the fence, the landscaping and everything. That right there is cost about almost $70,000. Why can't we just get the grant and just put this on hold?
That's up to
Because I'm improving the building, right?
That is correct. The CRA would be interested in having this added on to the building, just from the looks of it. I mean, as far as staff goes. But the grant does not require that. So it does, the grant does require, I mean, or does allow for improvement of the parking lot, improvement of the building, painting, signage, those kinds of things. So yes. I mean, at $77,000, he could put in $40,000 and meet the, the terms of the grant.
Well, that might be safe.
It's up to you.
Right, so if, I mean, for my point, if we put this on hold, because this is a great idea to bring it, I mean, that's the purpose, you know, to bring something and make it look more attractive, right? But I am doing stuff with the building, the paint, the landscaping, the parking lot, everything, so.
Well, and it does look kind of, it, it could use that facelift, you know, so I'd be okay with that. I would like to see it kind of cleaned up and maybe not have so much added to hard to, you know, and it's, the property to the south of it's a little rough too.
You know, it's that domino effect. If we get one
Right, right. Oh, and that works.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I don't know about, I'm okay if you do it with, with or without, personally.
All right.
Okay. So we do, are we going to approve it then? Or are we?
If you take that out, then the, the list of everything that's on his contractor's estimate would still meet the grant requirements.
Except for the
Except for that.
Sunroom and
That's something he could still do at any time anyways, but that would have to come forward just approval of what it's going to be.
Right, right.
So we're pulling that out?
Yes. Yes. He said yes, standing right there.
He's shaking his head, but I don't want to, I don't want to like we forced you into it.
He better, he better check on that.
Yeah, but your wife didn't want this.
It may get built anyway.
You would like to have that there? Get the ball. Need you to come up there.
This is Amaretty.
Yes, good afternoon. What I'm planning to have inside is kind of like a spa. It's going to have different kind of business inside, like facials, massage, different things. So this will be really nice, because most of them is going to be women's. They're going to be there. And it's kind of like a small coffee shop with some baking and things like that. So I think it will bring a lot of business.
It'll improve the building.
Yes.
It'll improve the appeal of the building.
Yes.
But if they don't do it
Yeah.
All right, I think then we'll approve it. But you need to supply, if you do the
Patio.
Patio, you'll need to provide Gail a list of the materials that it'll be built with or used to build it and revise figures just for the, the record, and then we can get copied on that.
Yeah, like, like you said, if we can do it now, we can do it later, but yeah, I think it would be great.
Yeah, we'll work with our building official just to, you'll have to go through him anyway for the permitting and all that, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of this item based on the conversation you just had.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you. Next item is nostalgia pizza shop at 38426 Fifth Avenue. Anthony Torres, Ms. Hamilton.
And Mr. Torres is here tonight as well to answer any questions. This is the building. It will be ice cream, pizza, and then coffee shop. Are you in the middle? Okay.
Ice cream, coffee, pizza. Pizza will be the one with the bluish.
And in your packet, you have the information from his contractors, the layout of the business. And if you have any questions, Mr. Amaretty is here, Mr. Amaretty, Mr. Torres is here to answer any questions. But we will have a new eatery downtown. And the addition of the pizza business with the ice cream and the coffee, we think, will be a great combination and will lift all three of the businesses. They'll work off of each other.
Am I correct in our commercial grants that like, well, I see we're a hood and exhaust system. If that's put in through this grant
It stays with the building.
It stays with the building, okay? And then they're aware of that?
They are aware of it.
Okay.
So will this be a full kitchen or just a pizza kitchen?
Just a pizza kitchen, correct?
Be inside dining?
You will have seating inside?
Yes, yeah, there's about, there's about 10 tables, four chairs per table. It's going to be a limited, limited service restaurant, so small kitchen and no, no grease or anything, just pizza oven conveyor style, so.
They will make you put in a grease receptor.
Yep, yep. So all of it is in there, the plumbing, the electrical and the HVAC going through the roof. So it's all going to be controlled and permitted, so.
And, and that is one thing. We do not do roof repairs, but it is in the estimate because the work is causing a hole to be put into the roof. So yes, the grant will cover that.
And the company who's doing it is also roofing as well, so it's HVAC and roofing, so they'll put the, the barriers And the company who's doing it is also roofing as well, so it's HVAC and roofing, so they'll put the, the barrier and all the ceiling in there as well, so.
Let's say it's gotta go up though.
Yeah.
Are you going, you are putting that in? Okay.
That's for eighteen thousand.
That is correct, that is fifty percent, it's a fifty percent match.
Thousand.
All right, I'm sorry, you're right, I heard thirteen, that's why I was checking, made sure we were right.
I heard eighteen.
I heard you fast, you said, you said eighteen.
Do we have any other questions, Mr. Torres?
There's a detail, estimate on this one, very detailed, so, um, I'd move approval to this item.
Second.
I think we have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is.
Okay, um, so, in the past month, we have spent, staff has spent a lot of time working on the grand opening of Hercules, which was a huge success. I am more pleased than I could imagine, there's not even been a negative thing said on social media about it that I've seen. Community has come out incredibly um supportive of the park and has used it extensively. We are making some additions to the park, we could not change anything uh during the construction because we had a maximum bid price, um, but we will be adding some additional cameras. Um, we lost a bunch of trees over by the backside of the businesses that face uh Gaal Boulevard, so we're uh, Kimley Horn is working right now on a design to add some uh screening, to screen out those businesses. And we'll put, again, we've got additional cameras, additional lights, one of the things that came up during our community meetings was disc golf, we had a bunch of people that really wanted to see disc golf. Well, at the time, there were so many trees in the park in that area, there was no way to, for it to be done. We lost, I think it was eighty seven trees in the park during Milton, so um, we had the McCraes, who, Mr. McCrae is a disc golf person, um, somebody who sets them up, um, he and his wife went out and looked at it, and they can do a small course in the tree area, so um, we're gonna get a price on that, we'll bring that back to you, um.
Because, yeah, it's frisbee and it's.
With a little basket? Because we think, I mean, kids and, uh, older kids' families would, I, I think it's another addition to the park that the families would love. Um, but again, we're gonna look at it, they're gonna lay it out, we'll bring it back to you and, uh, cause we've got to look at the cost of it. So um, but that's one of the things that we're adding. Also, trash receptacles, I've heard a lot from people about the trash receptacles uh next to the benches, they poured the uh slab for it, um, so we're ordering extra trash receptacles as well, um, as much as the budget will allow. Let me just say that before City Manager Poe says it for me, um, so that's Hercules Park.
I, can I?
Yes.
So um, I know that, that staff decided not to put uh areas for dog pickup, you know, uh, things out there.
They've been ordered, they're just not in.
Okay, because whether you want them there or not, people are walking their dogs there.
That is correct.
And if we don't have it there, then it's gonna become an issue, and then.
Little bags?
Huh?
The little bag holders.
Little bag holders.
They have something up there now.
Do they have them, uh, they weren't there on opening day.
Right.
They had been ordered and so.
Yeah, I was there last Thursday and there was, uh, they had two or three of them around there.
Okay, and then I, I know that staff at the last minute decided not to number the, the um pavilions.
They are, they are gonna be numbered.
Okay.
It was not in the contract.
Well, they have the numbers there, they had them there, and then they were told the last day not to put them up. But for a couple of reasons, they need to be up there.
Yes.
Okay, because if somebody's out there and they have to call nine one one, they wanna know they're at Pavilion ten or Pavilion three or Pavilion four.
And I will tell you, uh, today, Ricardo said to me, the most phone calls I've had today is about how do I secure or rent one of the um pavilions at Hercules, so yes, we need to uh number them.
Do we do?
That's my third question is.
Couldn't we do that? Why?
They need to be first come, first served?
Yeah.
Uh, all the time, there's no way to enforce it or to police it.
So if you, here's the thing, there's different options, okay? I know you guys, there's different options to doing this, but it, especially on a weekend, it doesn't have to be every day, but we already have the software where they can reserve it online, where it's not gonna take Ricardo's time if it's online, and if it's, you know, i- it really needs to be something, I, and I'm just telling you that, I've had more phone calls over that than anything else.
I can tell you that in Kissimmee, they do um a message board.
Yes.
That is uh tagged to each pavilion, and it says on a scroll, you know, Hamilton Party, uh, five to nine, reserved. And, and so that's how somebody can say, well, no, I'm, you know, I have it reserved, so, but there's still nobody there that will say, I'm sorry.
I under.
Dr. Spina, Ms. Hamilton has it reserved, you need to put your, pick your stuff up.
I get that, but you're gonna have more arguing and fighting with nothing than what you're gonna have this. And then the other problem I have is like, um, we have that grass area where people should be able to come and do things, like the Girl Scouts reached out to me and said, we wanna do our annual party there. That's great, we want them to do that there, I have no mechanism to do that unless I get up at nine o'clock and I'm over there and I, I set, so that is the problem that I have.
And permit, if they're coming in to, to hold a party in the middle of the field.
They wanna be able to use one of the pavilions and put a couple of tents up to where they can show, and they, they mostly just like to show, they do it at, they do it at at our other park every year.
Mm-hmm.
They just would like to use this park, but we don't have a mechanism to do that.
So if they do it at Zephyr Park, it'd be the exact same thing at Hercules, because there's not a reservation mechanism at Zephyr Park, correct? So it's the exact same process.
So they, they reserve, yeah, they, they reserve that pavilion thing, or the.
Well, you can reserve the BY Wickstrom stage.
The Wickstrom stage, and then they get, then they use that area for their tents.
I see what you're saying, the Wickstrom stage, not a.
Yes, yes.
So a benefit special event, isn't it?
Should be.
Right. Right. So, I mean, we have this beautiful, uh, uh, you know, grassy area that we want them to use for this kind of stuff, that's what that's for, huh?
Yeah, but if they're, if they're having, if they're having an event there, it needs to go through a special event permit, so that we make sure that they have the right insurance, that, that every, all the rules and regulations that we have in place are being followed.
But what if they, okay, all right.
Should we refer to that areas instead of just open play area as event area slash open play area so that you can do special permits like that, some people won't say, well, I was out there throwing a football yesterday, why can't I do it today, type thing?
I tell you what, I think what we need to do is sit down and come up with those things, where we put it on the website. We give it names, or we give them numbers, and that's something staff, we need to sit down and come up with and bring it back to you and make sure you're happy with it.
Isn't that one, again, we were standing under a little bigger than the other ones?
Some of them are bigger than others.
So, I mean, you could specify one as like the Hercules event area or something.
On it, so people would know.
That's by the grassy area kind of more, I mean, um, so that could be kinda, yeah, the event area.
So let us do that, we'll come back with, so, and we'll come up back with some ideas on reservations and, and how we do that, okay?
That's a good.
I have one thing about the park, um, I've been out there twice and, uh, I walked there one day and another day I had coffee, it was great, and people walking their dogs. You know, I never noticed, when you pull into the three oh one entrance by Culvers, just south of the sign, which is beautiful, there's a, like a, a concrete block um ditch with a ratty old chain link fence on it.
A Dover.
That I never even noticed before.
Yeah.
Really, just driving by, it kinda just, it's ugly and.
And it's bent.
Uh, yeah, and it, it's.
We think that it's, am I?
It might be part of the right of way or DOT something?
It's DOTs, it, it came up when we were doing the walkthrough and we were trying to find out, Morton Smith was trying to find out who owned it and what we could do with it.
Maybe look into that because it's funny how, once you spruce everything up.
Yeah.
That stood out like a sore thumb, you know, and I just thought, man, all this is so pretty, and then you drive by there and you see that beautiful sign and of, any.
It's Culver, it's the ditch.
Didn't even notice it.
Yeah, there must, it must be a um.
There's the sign, there's the chain link print.
It's just immediately south of it.
Yes, immediately south of it, we'll, we'll look into that as well.
Otherwise, man, thumbs up, you guys did a bang up job.
Thank you, everybody, uh, the entire city was, uh, city staff helped with it, um.
Can I just interject real quick, just, can I just interject real quick before you move on to the next one? We have twenty minutes, um, so, the direction for the, for staff was, let's create a park that, and I said this at the ground, or the ribbon cutting, that everyone goes, wow, and I will tell you from day one, I was always scared that we were spending a lot of money and we were not gonna get that wow when people walked in. You know, I asked, hey, let's create a park that, we go on vacation, we see parks, and we always come back home, we're like, why can't we have that? Why can't we have that in Zephyr Hills? And so Gail and, and, and the rest of the team, architects, engineers, they knocked it out of the park. Hit a homerun, whatever you wanna say, um, they did a great job, I think they created that wow factor, they created that park that people now come here and be like, whoa, how does Zephyr Hills get that, why can't we have that in our hometown? So kudos to Gail and, and the entire team for, for killing it on, on this project.
Um, I appreciate that.
What I would like you to do, remember the very first design we had on that, I, I remember it really well, yeah.
Without the bathroom, yeah.
Bring that thing here and take a look at that, because.
We've come a long way.
We, we, we can't settle for that, I mean, in anything, anything we do. I mean, because if we'd have done that, it'd have been the most disappointing uh expenditure of our money that we've ever had. So if we can't do something like that, we're better off just leaving it alone, that's my opinion.
And I think that's, that's the way we stated it that night was, we got, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it right from the beginning, we're not gonna, you know, go into it.
I was totally underwhelmed that night, and I'm like.
Well, I've been out there a couple evenings right before dark, it's, it's packed, it's packed out there, I've seen that when I was walking the trail, I said, you know what, and I remembered back to the frisbee golf thing, I said, oh man, it's, you know, it could really fit in there pretty easy, and, I mean, that'd just be another added thing, and I, I brought this up at our TDC meeting uh last week, and uh one of the women from Florida's Port Coast was out there, and she was there for the grand opening, she was just raving about the place, so it's getting a lot of exposure already even on the other side of the county, so.
I think we need a little bit of landscaping, like you said, on the three oh one side, maybe from where the entrance is to the south, around where that um, there's a couple businesses there that you, we see the back, that probably are because of the trees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think, you know, now we have set a, a, a standard that when we do Zephyr Park, man.
That's exactly right.
We, we.
And I will tell you what I'm, I'm most proud of about the design is that not only are kids having a great time, but they're, and families and adults, but they're also learning about the Hercules Powder Company and what that site was originally.
I like that historic element of it and how it was incorporated, um, and then Todd will remember, um, we had talked with the school district, they're gonna give us a strip of land on the edge of Woodland.
We're working on that.
Because, man, we're gonna need the parking.
So, so the, so that thirty five feet was dedicated as part of the original dedication of the park to the city. The issue is, is that the fence was never moved, so we own the land, that thirty five additional feet, the fence was never moved. And I'll, history real quick, if you go on the, on the uh property appraisers website, and you look at the two numbers that are on the um that make up the distance of the south end of the park, it totals three hundred and eighty nine feet, it's supposed to total four twenty four. But if you take the tape measure and you measure from point to point, it measures four twenty four. So, looking at it, we're like, oh, it doesn't, anyhow, we're talking to, as of uh Friday night, was the last time I talked to Chris Williams with the school board, and he, they're gonna have, send out a team to look at the fence and see what trees are in the way, and if there's trees in the way, we'll have a meeting, discuss how we maneuver those trees or we take them down, but um, as of Fri- last, Friday was the last conversation we had about getting that fence moved, because you're right on point, we're gonna need that additional parking, so.
It is packed every night, woo-hoo.
Great, great job.
Okay, um, a couple more things, Zephyr Park, the um, arborist has been back in with um our initial um review of the trees, Milton kinda took out the trees that we were planning on removing and did some damage to some others. So O'Neill had to go, the arborist had to go back, they had to do a new um estimate, they are planning on being there within the month. When I get a date of when they will do that trimming, I will email all of you so you will know what's going on in the park, because I'm sure you'll get phone calls if we start messing with trees in the park. So it is trimming, it's cleaning up, it's pruning uh to minimize any more damage uh of the trees. I don't think we're taking down, right now, we may be taking down one tree, but other than that, that's it, other than that, it's, it's pruning. Um, we will meet Thursday, Kimley Horn City Staff will meet with Swiftmund uh to talk about the park design and, and the flooding issues, and so we'll, there'll more information to come on that. Um, the RFP and uh for the scope of the redesign of Clock Plaza will be out on the street next week. Um, the Fifth Avenue Streetscape and Oak Side Cemetery Project bids are due March fourteenth. So um, we went back, reworked the construction plans, cause it was over budget, um, did some more detailed plans for bidding, and so we think we're gonna be within budget uh on March fourteenth, that we'll be able to go ahead and get that work done. Park signage, we've got, uh, you saw all the park signage for the remainder of the parks, we're working through some entrance issues and right of way, but when we get that uh done, we'll bring back final renderings of the um signage, so you will know what each park is going to receive, what uh sign they'll receive. Uh, staff is working with the city attorney, code enforcement, building department, and planning on food truck issues uh in the CRA and in the city as well. And that is my report, I'm gonna ask, do you have any questions?
Go ahead.
You said something about the food trucks, and that was something that I was gonna ask about, that um, in the parks, especially since we got the Hercules, we had talked about having a food truck area there, we need to be sensitive with the Wawa and the Culvers, so that maybe there's a parking area on the backside where they could go, but I still think it's nice to have the food trucks in the, in the parks when the people are there, Zephyr Park, same, that, so I, I don't know, I'm sure we have something established, but maybe we need to revisit all of it, I don't know.
Yes, and, and that is part of the discussion, and I will tell you that the Hercules Park, the grass area, each one of those um bollards uh is electric, so that the trucks can pull, uh, plug into them, instead of using a generator, the backside, um, there's an area for them to park uh as well, so we tried to design that, and it being at the back of the park so that it's not right in front of Culvers.
You know, and you said something that's pretty important, what you said about the generators, because there's a huge difference in a quiet generator, when you're playing at a park or something, and a loud one, I mean, the, the loud ones are like somebody's running a blower or something all the time, so, um, something to consider.
It's, it's a nice event versus carnival, you know, with, with the sound of those generators.
I know, I know.
Believe me, so we are working on that, we will come up with a plan because. that is going to be an issue. Um, and, and the same thing with Zephyr Park. We get complaints continually about Zephyr Park because the food trucks get in there and they put up feather flags and all these signs and they park in front of each other and, and it's, and they're on city property. So um, that's part of the discussion that we're having. So that's it for me.
And I had a, a question on the trees in Zephyr Park. So we lost some during hurricane. We're gonna probably lose maybe another one or two. Obviously, the, the trees are a big part of the park. Have we given any consideration of replanting? Because let's be honest, those trees that are out there now are kind of at the end of their life cycle anyways. And then we, we don't want to get caught in a point where we don't have any trees out there. So we might want to consider replanting at some point so we can continue on the shade and it'll take, you know, thirty years or whatever for.
I don't know that a hundred years ago, they thought about um the trees in the park.
Right.
We sure are enjoying their.
Yeah, oh yeah.
You know, their largess a hundred years later, two hundred years later. But we want to make sure that we plant trees so that our, you know, future uh citizens will have trees out there as well. So.
All right, thank you. We need. And Mr. Antoine. Up here. Thank you, Gail.
You're welcome.
All right, speaking of carnival. So um, first off, we hosted the Florida Main Street Regional Board Training on the eighteenth. And we had over um twenty individuals from a multitude of different Main Street districts come in. It was a really unique experience because you got to hear and see some people who don't normally come, actually who would probably never come into Zephyr Hills. They walked around our downtown. They um, they visited some of our merchants. They gave feedback that was unbiased um about our city and everything was actually very positive. Um, they, they really thought that we, you know, you hear the same thing, quaintness and hallmark and all those things. They love some of the selections we have. So it, it, it was really cool to hear and feel someone that's not um from here, give their perspective. And big thanks to Mayor Melanie for actually answering my phone call and coming by and saying hello to the districts because uh we had different individuals from Brooksville, um Palmetto, um Plant City, and then the, the speaker was from Jacksonville. Um, and, and my state director is here. So that was really cool to have the mayor and, and have them participate. But it was a great event. I have some pictures I'm gonna show at the end. Not now. Oh, if you are ready, I am so sorry. No pictures. It's a picture. Okay, never mind. I don't have the pictures. Forget that. All right, next, um, this will probably, uh, today we have uh made a decision that I wanted to make sure that we bring to everyone's attention. So we're getting ready for Founder's Day. It is less than in Gail's words, two weeks away. Cause you know, I don't know how much time we have left. But yeah, we're two weeks away from this year's Founder's Day. And um, if you see me losing here, it's okay. It's, it's a part of the process. But um, we have made a decision to change the parade time from eleven to four. After feedback from a lot of the community and a lot of the vendors that participate. Um, because what happens if you have the parade at eleven, people leave. And the vendors and other people are a little concerned about that. So the board decided today that we're going to have it at four P M, which still is daylight. So anyone who has vehicles that wouldn't be able to see because their lights wouldn't work will still be able to see. Um, we have to do some more communication with Public Works and some other groups just to make sure we're all on the same page. But you will see that probably coming out in social media very shortly. We are at currently eleven signups for the parade, which is a very low number. So you're gonna see a big push because we have to have at least thirty in order to have the parade. Founder's Day is probably um one of those events that just require as much collaboration from everyone. So I, I would encourage anyone that has social media and when you talk to, to please, please, please help us um continue to promote um what's going on. We are doing so many things to try to um get the attention. We are, are waiting to hear back about some live music. We're gonna look to have. We just added a classic car show. We have an art show going on. Obviously, the five K will be going on during the same time. So as far as promotion time, we're doing everything we can. But just to be realistic, it is the same weekend as the Renaissance Fair. It is the same weekend as the Strawberry Festival. So we're up against some stiff competition, but we're, we're, we're working hard. Um, our membership drive is a, is about to kick off. Um, we have um for twenty twenty five, e- everyone that participates will be investors and not members. But we are going to um go hard and, and remind everyone that we are non-for-profit and we need membership and investors to keep going. And then the theater renovation and preser- preservation update, um, the contract has been signed with the chosen architect firm. And we are looking for work to begin shortly. I don't know what that timeframe is. I do not have a date just yet, but we are moving right along with that. Fancy Flea um was a huge success for us. There was a, there was thousands of people who came downtown. Um, it was a very unique experience because it's, it was an event that wasn't necessarily hosted by Main Street, but the turnout was great. The community seems to be very positive with the feedback and the organi- organizer of Fancy Flea has already put in requests for twenty twenty six. So we, we're hoping that we can continue this relationship on for some time. And then our social media engagement over the past month, we have gotten a lot of attention. We um, within the past month, we've had a hundred and twenty two thousand views, which is a forty percent growth. Um, it's an unbelievable opportunity for what we're doing so far. Um, over the, over the last few months, we've done so a three question series that recently Lamp lighter is featured on this, this past month. We're working on a new one actually this week. And it's a perspective where we go inside and talk to some different, we've been talking to merchants, but we're looking for some residents and some, um, some workers of the district to just give a perspective of what they feel and things that they, they want to share. Um, we are currently working with two groups of interns, one from Saint Leo and a group from USF. And that they're focusing on our Instagram social media because that's what we lack a little bit. We do have a following on Instagram, but it's not as strong as it is on Facebook. And those are the individuals that we think we're missing out on when it comes to some of the events and things we do. Um, and so we are, we, I'll probably have some updates over the near future about what that engagement is like. And then I want to share a video that, oh, hold on, pause for just a second. I'm so sorry. So one of our interns from Saint Leo is currently working with Pompano, the coffee company that will be opening soon. And, and just like with some of the other um new businesses that come into the district, Main Street is gonna be there before them, before they ever open. So we are going to be posting things about Pompano on our social media. Honestly, ahead of them even posting on their social media. So our intern created this for them today and the owner saw it. I just wanted to share it with you. It's just a brief reel. Unfortunately, yeah. So we created a reel. This is definitely um focused more on Instagram, but she created brewing soon instead of coming soon. And the owners were thrilled about it. We're gonna put a little caption and talk about some of the other details that come along with them. But over the next couple of weeks, you'll see that. We're also hoping that we get, can get nostalgic pizza in some of the other places that are coming to the area to collaborate with Main Street prior to them opening so the community can be engaged about it. Thank you so much. Any questions?
I have a question. I have a quick question. Um, you're gonna have live music down there uh on Founder's Day.
So we are currently negotiating with a band. We want to have live music. We haven't announced it yet, but it will be coming in the near future. I think we'll know by Thursday.
You have one band or several bands?
We have one band.
Okay.
We'll just be playing, well, it was gonna be playing after the parade. So now with the time change, we'll be playing a little bit before the parade to lead into the parade.
But the event will go from like three to eight or something instead?
The event is from ten to four. So we're looking to have them come in probably around eleven to three. And then the parade kicks off at four and then when it's over.
Oh, it's over.
Yes, sir.
Over, it's over. But the event is prior and then you're done.
Correct.
And you're gonna have the car show and all that.
The car show will be going, it will be going on during the time of the event. Like, so I would say between the hours of ten and four, exactly.
Okay, all right.
And I just want to be the, I don't want Antoine to be the um bearer of bad news. But every year, we have issues with trying to get people to participate in the parade. We have a group of people that really want us to do a parade for Founder's Day and that it's, you know, sacrilegious if we don't. But right now, two weeks before the event, we have eleven people have signed up for it. If the community doesn't want to do a parade, they don't want to do a parade and we can't make them. You know, sometimes things have to change. The, they just play out. And so I hate to say it, but you know, it's thirty, it's thirty um vehicles or thirty participants in the parade. And that would be really sad if all we had was thirty. But so if you can help us get the word out and then if we don't do it, help us with the social media. It'll come after.
Well, and, and here's the problem is, you know, the people that are gonna complain on social media, they're not being in the parade.
That's correct.
Actually, majority of them don't even come down to the parade. But, but you know, if you could, you cannot have a parade with ten, ten cars. You can't have a, it just, it doesn't make sense. And, and every year we go through this same thing. So.
But um, the air parade was. You know, I, I, I was thinking though, every time there's an event downtown, uh, people, I see things on Facebook or, you know, social media saying, oh, I wish I had known. I would have gone and all that. So maybe we need to amp up.
Everybody post it.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not saying.
Um, let's, let's just talk about that for a second. So you know, there is not a, a city paper, first and foremost.
I know, I know. I'm not criticizing you. I'm saying that's, I'm saying.
Understood, understood. I am so sorry. Let me take my voice down. What I was gonna say is that we have, including the engagement we're having with the local colleges, we are, we are going everywhere we can to promote. The reality of it is, is not everyone looks at the same look for anything, like, like calendar wise and things like that. We do as much as we possibly can to get the word out. And what I tell everyone on social media when they say things like that is our promotion committee meets every month. And we encourage, and in fact, we got an email back from someone who shared the same sentiments and they're gonna be attending our promotions meeting.
Well, most of the people that complain don't participate in stuff like that.
But we're aware.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm so sorry to go so loud.
So what I would say is, please help us, everybody, everybody in this room, repost it. You have different followers than we do. Help us get the word out and, and so that everybody can see it and.
But make sure it's, it's shareable.
Exactly. Cause it's shareable and it's also, we partner with the Free Press. They are also sharing it for us. Um, and again, like I said, we are striving to reach not just the local community because that's the biggest thing. We could get everyone in the city and they still wouldn't show up, but we're reaching outside of the local community. We're going to area Saint Leo, um, um, you know, to San Antonio, um, every place that we can, Wesley Chapel, because it's big for the merchants here to not just have locals. They need some other individuals coming in.
We want everybody.
For the events as well.
And I think the other thing about having it later in the day is you're not gonna compete with Little League and some of those things that start out early.
Who we're also partnering with in this event as well.
And the other thing with main, with Founder's Day, we know this when we were kids, it was popular because the parks all got engaged. They all came out. That group does not want to do that anymore.
So that's a great segue. We actually met with a few parks and talked to some few, a few parks end of last week, beginning this week. It was the king and queens of the parks. Well, a lot of the parks after COVID, they not only decided not to do that, but some of them decided to steep, keep it inside of their parks. So now they do the king and queen, but they don't necessarily have the que- king and queen coming out, which is honestly, the reason why we're probably at the position we are with the floats because
I agree.
They're not coming, then we don't have it.
And they do their, their little parades around their parks. And I understand that. I'm in the parks all the time. I get it. You know, so it, it, it does, things change. Unfortunately, we don't love that sometimes, but they change.
Oh, and really with eleven, eleven people, come on, you know? And they'll say it. They'll say, oh, I can't believe they not having it. But it's like, you haven't been to the last ten. So why are you complaining? You know, really? So. But and it's a, it's a lot to put on those parades too. A lot of work.
Yes, sir.
I used to do that. That was one of my jobs.
You're welcome to, you're welcome to come to a meeting.
All right. Thank you. Should we have nothing else? Thank you. All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned. We'll take five minutes.
Thank you.
Hey, Antoine.
Billy.
No. Good, you doing all right? Good to see you.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
If people want to talk tonight, I've got three citizen comments and one gentleman um here specifically to speak about the ordinance.
Let me get there. Yeah, yeah, dress that. Okay.
Let me get there, yeah, yeah, address that, okay.
Well, there's only one controversial thing on here, so.
I was the pod.
Maybe two.
I want to take off something from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Kenny, I'm going to take something off. On five.
Take one.
Yeah, I think we.
Okay, all right, well, I'll just.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to call the order, the City Council meeting in Zephyr Hills, Florida, Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, it is six-ten PM. Um, Ricardo, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Lance Smith.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson. Stephen Spina.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Here.
All right, at this time, um, we're going to have the invocation, and Reverend Benjamin from the Saint Elizabeth Episcopal Church will lead us in invocation, and then we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, I have two prayers, one for the city, and one for the you all and our people. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which all the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, this city of Zephyr Hills. Renew the ties of our mutual regard for each other, which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders, like those here present. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that both men and women, from different cultures and with differing talents, may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ over Lord. Amen. And the prayer for City Council. Almighty God, the source of all authority, send down upon those who hold office in this city, especially those that I mentioned by name. Mayor Munson. City Clerk. Counselor Wilkson. Counselor Smith. Counselor Burgess Junior. Counselor Spina. Uh, who did I miss? The City Manager, Joe.
Proctor.
And the Attorney, Margaret, and I, who did I miss, Proctor? Sorry, Mr. Proctor.
It's all right.
The Lord missed you. Uh, give them a spirit of wisdom, themselves, their staff, their families, of charity and justice, that with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices, promote the well-being of all people. And for those among us who feel called to a lifetime of public service beyond Zephyr Hills, to Tallahassee and Washington DC, bless them too, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Benjamin. Okay, um, welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. I want to ask you at this time if you can silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Uh, the beginning of our meeting, we'll start off with some citizens' comments, and just to let you know, if you're going to make any comments, uh, if you haven't already signed up with the City Clerk, uh, you would want to do that. You'll have three minutes for your comments, and when you come up, if you could state your name and address for the record, please. So at this time, I'm going to go to the citizens' comments, and I'm going to ask City Clerk if we have anybody signed up.
Yes, sir, we have several. Um, first up, we have Phyllis Purvis.
I'm Phyllis Purvis, I live at eighty-six eighteen Gall Boulevard. Um, I just wanted, I don't know who to bring this to the attention of. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Um, I didn't know who to bring this to the attention of, so I have Todd's email and I have Lance's email, so I'm CCing both of them. But, I live out here at the end of town, but still Zephyr Hills, I'm the beginning of Zephyr Hills. Now, I know it's kind of mishmash, so I know that I'm the city limits, I'm not sure this property is, but it's eighty-one thirty-three, eighty-one thirty-three Gall Boulevard. It used to be those cozy cottages on the left-hand side as you're heading out of town. It wound up being all homeless people, a lot of drugs, they chased them out, they made them demolish it. That was like six months ago. It is a disaster. And I sell real estate, and you want to keep it pretty, and everybody talks about the beauties of Zephyr Hills all the time, and it's like, oh my God, so I took pictures. I mean, I send them to them, they can forward it, I'm not sure if it's county, if it's county, if somebody can just let me know who that person is, if it's the city. I think they should just probably find that person over and over and over till they move it. And, I'm a Realtor, there's a massive Realtor sign there, that's a huge no-no. If you know that your client is doing something, we're held to a much higher standard, because we're licensed, and so we're supposed to not allow that to happen. And so this person, I don't even know if that Realtor, but I'll also send a picture of the Realtor's, um, sign as well, but, you know, to try and bring people into town and to show them all around, and then it's like, oh, don't look at that.
Yeah, Ms. Purvis, that's, it's in the county, uh, we'll get our code enforcement guys to contact the county officers.
It's bad, there's people, people are now dumping stuff there, there's sofas and all kinds of trash and stuff. So I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purvis, thank you very much.
Next, I have Kendall DeFord.
Good evening, Kendall DeFord at five-seven-one-four-eighteenth Street. Um, I, I, maybe I should have made some calls earlier, but I thought I had heard at some time we have an ordinance against donation boxes just being placed all over town. Um, I did, I did catch Matt just a few minutes ago, and he's going to check into it. But these white donation boxes are popping up everywhere. Um, and I think it's all one place, they got the same phone number on them, and junk is being dumped beside them. The Ministerial Association several years ago placed our blessing boxes, we try to police them, um, so that they aren't an eyesore, but some of these white donations are eyesores. If we have an ordinance against it, I'd like to have code enforcement check on it. Thank you.
Agreed with you, I've seen those out there, and I think it's something we can.
We do have an ordinance against, well, it doesn't prohibit it, it, there, there's a certain permit process, and there's a lot of criteria, whether you can or can't put one out. I'll pass it along to code enforcement to take a look at.
Perfect, thanks.
Um. Yeah, I actually think we addressed, uh, this came up several, several years ago, about the dumping around so, outside them and stuff like that too, so we need to get back in the enforcement mode on that, I suppose.
Yeah, it looks like we passed ordinance in, in sixteen, and, uh, you know, they, coding department's been kind of inundated lately, so I'll, I'll just let him know that they need to take a look at those and, um, start the enforcement.
Do you know where, do you have areas that you know where they're located that you could tell us, and? Okay, yeah. Will you, will, will you reach out to them and let them know where they're located, and that way we can get code enforcement out there?
Mr. DeFord, one of them is in Zephyr Plaza, right there near Harbor Freight, isn't it? Yeah, I, I know there's one there.
Thank you. Email them to me, and I'll get on my way to them. Uh, next I have LeAnn Jensen.
Hi. Hi, I'm LeAnn Jensen, five-five-four-nine-twenty-third Street. There are a number of complaints being brought forward, and everything is being couched so far in a very negative way, and it's being responded to in a very negative way. We don't like this, we don't want this, don't allow this. And I'm wondering if we can present some more positive, what can we do? How can we show appreciation and beautify our city and get more people involved? Such as, maybe an incentive to go for a walk and load up a grocery bag full of garbage that you see and throw it away? If I bring in five bags of garbage, you know, maybe I'll get my name noted on the Facebook, or something like that. But something inspiring people to take part, not put everything on the City Council, on the city budget. But what are some things that people can do to get involved and help and just build up our community? It, it becomes very anxiety-inducing to come up here and feel like I'm going to be talked about behind my back as a problem maker, or a negative person who's just causing problems and not trying to solve anything. It's, it's hard, I've lived here for years, and I'm struggling to get more involved in the community because there are just not a lot of open doors. There's a lot of closed ones, there's a lot of things I can't do, a lot of places I can't go. I can't walk my kids to school because there's no sidewalks or no streetlights, for instance, you know? I just would really like to see more, what can we do?
All right, well, thank you, we welcome anybody to come up with, to have their comments, and nobody should ever feel as if, uh, you know, you know, they're a problem. Because, believe me, if we don't hear it from, we don't know about it a lot of times. Um, I will say, uh, one thing, we've just had a, a, I don't know the exact number, I'm going to say a one-point-three-million-dollar investment of adding sidewalks throughout town, and there's more to come in the future. Um, also, we have a community cleanup coming up March, and I don't remember the date. If I remember, some of our early ones, there were, um, there were organization, twenty-second? In the early ones we did several years ago, there was some, uh, community involvement with different clubs and stuff that were going around and doing just exactly what you were talking about. So I would encourage you to maybe get with, um, Ms. Hamilton and our CRA Director, because she's kind of coordinates that. And, so if you guys had something else to say, or, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, but thank you.
Vicki Wiggins.
So I'm at Positive Cheerio, Vicki Wiggins, three-eight-five-five-zero-Fifth Avenue. Um, I'm going to say thank you for all of your support and your attendance at the Pigs and Zee Hills a couple weeks ago. It was a resounding success, we're very, very happy with the turnout, we were, our vendors were happy, our attendees were happy. Hopefully all of you were happy, and, um, even though Charlie didn't, you know, get to, to defend his championship.
I still can't sleep.
Um, it was a great day, and I thank all of you for, for doing that and coming out and helping us with that event. I also want to remind you about, um, two days from now, Wednesday night, is the Access to Opportunity that you all were invited to. It's, um, from five to seven at the Date City Women's Club, Wednesday night. So don't forget to come on out, you've been registered, and you're welcome to come, there'll be food and drinks and lots of networking, so we hope to see you there. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Vicki, and, and I thought, uh, the event went off, it was really great, and the weather couldn't be more perfect that day, so. Yeah, exactly.
Mr. President, do you have any idea how many people attended roughly? Because it was much larger than last year.
If I base it on my guests from last year, I would say we probably had like thirteen to fifteen thousand.
That's awesome. It was definitely packed.
Yeah, it was very much packed, everybody was really super happy.
Thank you.
I have none others signed up for citizens' comments, I have one signed up for an item later on.
Okay, is there any other citizens that would like to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, then I will, um, I see the mayor's on here, but do you have anything? Okay. And then I'll move to the consent agenda items, and you can, um, any council member can pull consent agenda item, or we can vote on it in entirety.
Um, I would like to approve the consent agenda, but remove item one-point-five, uh, the South Avenue Extension. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items, one-point-one, one-point-two, one-point-three, one-point-four, and one-point-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes four to zero, and at this time, we can address, uh, consent agenda item number one-point-five.
I, I just had some questions about, uh, the cost and the payment of the South Avenue Extension that is going to the National Guard site on, uh, off of, just north of, I guess, Sixth Avenue. Um, I think the bid came out at two-point-three, roughly. Um, DOT is paying one-point-nine for that, I, I guess through the state appropriation. And we're being asked to pay, um, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred dollars out of, uh, transportation impact fees. And, um, uh, according to the information in the packet, uh, half a million dollars has already been paid to date. And I don't know if that's, who's that's been paid for, I guess to the contractor?
Uh, half a million of that, um, part, a hundred, a hundred-and-five-thousand was paid for design, and four-hundred-thousand was to the, um, to purchase the right-of-way.
I understand that the road will extend north and offer access to property that is north of that, that is in the county now, but we expect to be in the city?
Uh, correct, yes, sir, it's both the county, uh, excuse me, it's both city jurisdiction and county jurisdiction. So to the left is Four Rail, and that is currently in the city. It's just north of the, um, the Armory, and then to the east is Five L Property, or kind of like to the north and east is Five L.
So, the national, you know, the more you kind of dig into this, the National Guard property is about twenty acres. Because it's a government facility, it was industrial, it's taken off the tax roll. Um, it sold a couple years ago for two-and-a-half million dollars. And I just think that this was prompted by a state legislator, and I think that we should go back to the state and ask for more money, uh, to cover the cost of the road, or at least most of it. I don't, I don't think, you know, I know it'll provide access north, but even co, uh, companies or co, um, industrial tenants would probably be paying their share of transportation impact fee to pay that road anyway. So, I just think that, um, we're not getting tax revenue from it, uh, we're being asked to pay about a million dollars. And I think that, um, we should go back to the state and say that they need to kick in more money, that's.
Um. We can do that, I just, I don't know timing-wise how that, how that's going to work. Um, because we're in session now, I'd have to ask, um, if there'd be funding in this year's budget, or if they could put it into this year's budget if they sponsored, um, additional funding for it. It, it might have. I, I know that, um, excuse me, the appropriations request had to be submitted, uh, by February first, um, so we submitted our four projects. I don't know if we can get that out, I mean, we can ask the question, I don't know that we can get it into, um, the budget for this coming year.
And a reimbursement, is that a possibility? I mean, I don't know how you feel about it, but I just think that, um, this was initiated by a state senator. It was approved by the state legislature, uh, it removed taxable property from the city rolls. And, um, and now they're expecting us to, and, and how long is it, it's, it's what?
Sixteen-hundred feet.
So.
So it's, it's not just a roadway, it does also have, um, there, is it thirteen-hundred feet, sixteen-hundred feet? So there is water and sewer lines there as well that extend to the north, um, so that we have utilities then available to, um, all of those, uh, properties to the north, uh, kind of north, east and west.
And that's kind of another contention I have. We've applied to the state several times for septic to sewer funds, we've never received them. But they've provided funding for utility extension to the National Guard and potentially industrial property north of there, when we still have residential people within our utility service area that are not accessing city sewer. So, you know, I just, I just don't think this is that great of a deal.
Yeah, well, I, the road, the utility infrastructure going in is for potential industrial users that would be in the city limits. The neighborhood that you're talking about is, they're county residents.
They're in our utility service area.
They are, but there's other places in our utility service area that don't have water and sewer available.
They have city water. They have access to sewer. And we're required with a agreement with the county to provide septic, I mean sewer, to people within the utility service area if it's available. We've sought state assistance for it. They've turned it down several times over the past, I'd say, six years at least. Anyway, that's, that's.
And I think you do bring up a good point because if this was a residential development, we would expect the developer of that residential development to bear the cost of the road and the extension of water and sewer. The other thing that we could think about is that anybody who comes down the road that hooks to it, they need to reimburse us for that portion. So we, I agree, I think somebody, I think we should look for reimbursement from somebody. I'm not sure exactly who. And it may be the legislature, but it could be other people that jump in there and want to access the road and the water and the sewer. So, I mean, I think that might be a possibility as well.
Yeah, so part of what we're going to do, there's a couple, like $200,000 that's in contingency. Obviously, we try not to use all of that contingency, which will reduce that, reduce that $900,000 bill. We're also gonna meet with the contractor to see if there's any value engineering that can take place to reduce that, that fee. And then I also had a conversation with utilities director today about the possibility of utilities fund kicking in, some funds towards the utilities portion of the project. So it is a two, excuse me, $2.3 million project that they're putting 1.9 million towards, or excuse me, it's a $2.8 million project that they're putting 1.9 million dollars towards.
About a million.
Correct. And, you know, this was funding that was requested two years ago. So at the time, the 1.9 million dollars was estimated to cover the cost of construction. Fast forward to today, with the increased costs, that's the difference, a large portion of the difference that we're seeing.
How much is, how much is the utility portion, do you know?
930, 900, what? 972,000.
So the utility cost is almost the whole amount that we'd be paying?
Correct. Yes.
But it wouldn't come from TIF, or you're gonna split it?
Um, we're gonna see how close we can get to even and then we'll have conversations looking at the, at the funds.
Have a motion.
We do. I actually just saw an email that came through that DOT's, says that we, excuse me, our current contract expires on March 26th, I believe, of this year, so we have to ask for an extension. And they typically only give us six month extensions. We're gonna try to get a year, based on the email that I saw earlier today.
Yeah, and I do think that Councilman Spenden brings up a very good point, that people that hook up to that should pay something. I mean, and I know that they paid, that there's, there's been a payment made, but that, the, us doing that has increased the value of the property around there.
I agree.
So the people that come in need to pay something towards that.
So one of the things that we can look at, and obviously council would have to approve this, is as the development occurs, the industrial development occurs, we do not get, so we give incentives based on job creation. We can give it to them on permit, we can reduce permit fees, waive transportation impact fees, reduce, add valorum for a period of time. So one of the things we can do is not give transportation impact fee credits. And the reason being is, hey, we built the road.
Yeah.
And there's an expense there and they have to pay towards that. So that could be next year, that could be.
Whenever.
10 years.
Yeah.
So there is a time there, but I think that's one of the options that we have is to not waive the transportation impact fees in the future as an incentive to develop.
And I think that makes sense, too. I do think that makes sense. But, but, and, and the other thing, I don't think it hurts us to ask the legislature for money. Never hurts to ask it, so.
Can ask that tomorrow.
But I would move approval based on our conversation of this item there.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve consent agenda item 1.5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three, two, one. All right, business items.
First business item, we have the business item 2.1, first reading of ordinance number 1498-25, ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, proposing amendment to the city's zoning map designation, changing the zoning designation from county or city R4 multifamily residential to city C1 neighborhood commercial for approximately 8.52 acres of real property identified as parcel 262521000000700000, provided for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, Matt. And I'll turn it over to our city planner, Todd, for some analysis.
Thank you. Good evening, Todd Vanderburg, planning director for the city. In your agenda packets, you got a memo that we provided you along with a copy of the neighborhood map that we're gonna try to bring up. And then while we're bringing that up, we also have a business impact estimate. I don't know if you saw that, that was an attachment in there. Any ordinance that we do nowadays, we have to do, state requires us to do that business impact statement that you'll see in there. And then what we do is, if this all goes through, then we put a place a copy of the, of the business impact estimate on the city's website under the announcements. We have a particular link for that, but, so that's what that's in there, in case you were curious. Here's a copy of the aerial location map. We're looking at about a little, around eight and a half acres, the area in red there, located on the east side of 301. North side of the property, across the street lines up with Terabella, and we're north of Kosik Road here. The applicant is seeking a rezoning to develop the property commercially for two hotels, as you know. I'll provide a little bit of a background of some, some work before we move on with the actual item of the rezoning. The city staff, planning commission, and city council, it was asked when we did the planning report, I think council recommended that we hold a visioning workshop to look at this entire planning area here that you see essentially on both sides of 301 and north of Kosik Road up to the northern property that we're looking at tonight, which would be Terabella. So from that, there was some results that, we had some really good workshop meetings, we had exercise, we broke up into three groups and kind of came up with a vision for this entire area, including the hotel sites. And then, as we reported, we think it was pretty successful. I think we presented a preliminary draft of a proposed future land use category that Tammy and I have been working on, that would accommodate kind of more of a mixed use setting. And we had a kind of a preliminary draft of a vision of how that could look. We talked about good connectivity. We talked about the idea of a park on the bottom piece of that, that work group area that we were looking at. Perhaps a greenway trail and a good mix of uses that we would come up with and identify as part of that future land use category. Of course, we'd look at density, intensity, those primary and secondary uses, good connectivity, with an underlying zoning that would be in the future for PUD, that would, would have some PUD guiding principles that someone comes to us and they want to develop a property, they abide by the, both the future land use category and the PUD zoning defining criterias. So that, that went really well. We brought that to the planning commission this month and it was also, again, very well received. So Tammy and I are continuing to work on the new future land use category. Met last week and talked some more about it. And so kind of my, my interpretation of when we finished the last meeting with you guys on this, we had two directives. One, we weren't gonna hold up Warnaker's petition, two petitions, both the rezoning and the conditional use, that we, that y'all were okay with us moving forward. So tonight, we're looking at the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. And then if this moves forward, then the next council meeting, we would have the adoption public hearing and also the conditional use, the resolution that deals with the height. That only requires one, one reading. And that's why we tag team them to both finish at the same time. I also share with you, there's some ideas and thoughts that we had that came out of the visioning for conditions. And myself and Mr. Johnson, who's here this evening, and the applicant, we're working on what those conditions are that have been brought up. And we'll be sharing those with you in the upcoming week, probably through the city manager, just to go over those, to let you have the opportunity to see those and comment on those in case you have any ideas or suggestions. So, yeah, that, that's kind of a little background where we've been, where we're at tonight. But again, tonight is just the rezoning of the property from R4 multifamily residential to C1 neighborhood commercial that would allow for consideration of the hotels. So I'm here to answer any questions and we also have Lynn Johnson. He's the attorney representing the applicant here this evening.
Thank you, Todd. And can I ask the mayor, I guess this came before the planning commission, probably last week?
Actually, this came to the planning commission in February, or in November.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, so you haven't, you haven't discussed this anymore at the planning commission?
We did not discuss this anymore. When we did the planning commission, we had four, four, two against.
Okay.
That's how the voting came out that night.
And I know, I think we did discuss what their thoughts were at that time. I just didn't know if it came back before them again.
We didn't talk more about the hotel part.
Last meeting was the, the new future land use category, which again, includes this hotel that you're seeing on the screen tonight, but it was more on the proposed recommendation that council had for us to create a new future land use category.
Right, right. Okay, and, you know, and yes, you know, to just kind of go over what you just said about, we had workshops on it, we've had a lot of discussions about this at this point. Anybody have any questions for Todd right now?
So you're, you're, you've begun work on the proposed land use designation?
A new future land use category, correct.
That would cover this, where we talked about, that we would, have you started working on, now, most of the properties surrounding this parcel is multifamily. Have you started work on, we, we had talked about having a, kind of maybe creating a new commercial zone that would fit into this, that would eliminate car washes.
Yeah, exactly.
Gas stations, drive-through, fast food.
That's what we're thinking. I think we had some pretty good discussions on that, but, and, you know, Ms. Purvis is here tonight, she emailed me today and I confirmed with her that, yeah, it's just the hotel that we're looking at, the rezoning tonight, and that next meeting, the conditional use for the height. But yeah, we are moving forward. I'm working directly with Tammy Veranna. Y'all saw the preliminary draft of that future land use category, or some things we need to tweak. We've even thought about maybe that type of mixed use, traditional feel, might even be opportunities for that. Other areas of the city where you might have like an older shopping center complex like Zephyr Plaza or, or some of your larger strip centers, it might be a good fit. We just started talking about that today, not to muddy the water, but, so, yes, we are working on that. Tammy also asked, well, should, and we're gonna start moving forward with the, the visioning sessions for citywide, kind of like we did just for this area, we're gonna do it citywide as part of the overall conference plan update. She says, well, do we want to build this into that? I said, no, we need to move forward with the future land use. I understand why she asked the question, but I said, we, we've been dealing with some property owners and we want to move forward with moving, moving the new future land use category through the process and, of course, for state approval, so.
Well, have you talked with the Purvis family? I, I understand you, there's different, family members own different parcels if they are agreeable to rezoning property to a different zone?
Well, I know, Phyllis, of course, has been involved with a lot of the discussions that we've had. I met with one of the others, probably on the southern end, where we just had some general discussions about the parks. So those are the two Purvices that I spoke with. I haven't talked with the others. But, yeah, one, as we move forward, there'll, there'll be that public process where we send out the letters, the, the, put out the public notices and we can certainly have. I, I think in this instance, being that this is a little bit different, we probably can and should reach out to the property owners and, just not the Purvices, but on both sides of 301 that this would affect. We probably want to have some good communication and discussions to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing, why we're doing it, kind of a little historical background on it.
Ms. Purvis.
I have the answers to the question. Okay, so number one, it's me. I mean, I'm one of them. And then I represent because I'm the Realtor, the properties are for sale. So it is my uncle, who's almost 90. So this is, there's the reason they don't. And then my other uncle, who is in Alabama, and they're same mindset, we're all on the same page. And then the other properties that are across the street, where it has a little block that says low density and even south of that, he is the actual owner of where the hotels are going to be, so he's all on board. So everybody's on board. I mean, the only one that I directed him to was my uncle Glenn, which is Lot 4. And he is, he's that long strip by the pond and he just, he's old school, he's gonna be around for a long time. So he's a little bit younger, he's like 75, but I don't think he's interested in selling anytime soon. But once he passes, then his family will move it very quickly.
He owns a piece down where the low area is?
Not the pond.
Not the pond?
No, the pond I sold and they were supposed to make, that was my aunt's and she was supposed to make, the new owner was supposed to do the assisted living. But they kind of came to a stop and nobody's seen him again. So it kind of went off the table. But what happened was after, after the shutdown with the city, with, assisted livings were not a big hit. They took a really hard hit because people's families passed away and they couldn't visit them. That was not a good timeframe for, um, not, wouldn't be revisited at some point in time, but they hit a lot of roadblocks with that.
So the pond area, the low area, is owned by the assisted living people?
Yeah, but it's a guy up in New York and I have his contact information. I mean, so, you know, if you guys ever went to make a park, he may be receptive to it. Because, you know, even though they, I know that they did put money into the assisted living, I'm not saying, saying they wouldn't go that way again, but the timing was not good. Because they couldn't find a buyer. Because nobody wanted to invest in assisted living because their family members died there during COVID, so it got a big turnoff. So I think as it cycles, it'll maybe come back up.
Great, thank you.
When you say your uncle, is that the one that has the house on it?
Uh, that is his little tiny house up there.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, that's his house and it's weird because he's in front of Lot, there's a story there. When they divided the property, there were five of them, my dad being one of them, and they just drew numbers out of a hat.
Got it.
And so even, he probably would have wanted that piece, he wound up with four. And I wound up with one, which is where the house is, which was where I was anyway, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to, because I, I remember in the conversation we had during the workshop and we had talked about basically carrying that, that commercial along 301, right? I mean, that was a consensus that I remember from the meeting. Is that the way we're gonna?
Well, I, I think whether it's carried all the way through, what the new future land use category will make allowable is for a mixture of uses. And with the underlying PUD zoning, that allows us to get creative and make it more traditional, good connectivity, good landscaping, trails, you know, all that. And I think, you know, I think it was a combination of staff. When we originally recommended denial, it was just looking at that. But then we, we had that further discussion where we look at the entire planning area where we brought some examples, like North Point Village, of looking at an entire area and creating a special, a specific and new future land use category that. and creating a special, a specific and new future land use category that would allow for some creativity and versus just straight zoning that looked like any place else. I think with that change, staff was supportive of that, and you know, we recommended favorably on that as well, once we took a look at creating a new future land use category with those parameters built into it.
So the neighborhood commercial, we would look to that, carry it southward, then, right?
Yeah, again, there'll be, under the future land use category, you'll have primary and secondary uses that would be allowed under that future land use category. And then when you get down to specifics, it'll, at least what we're proposing now is a PUD zoning. So they would.
Have conditions on it, yeah.
And then with the PUD zoning, we got all these qualifying criteria and standards that we'd like to throw in.
Sure.
All these issues that we've been talking about.
Okay.
In that conversation, we were saying we wanted to have a little bit of a different commercial zone, where we were going to take out convenience stores, car washes, things like that. So we were going to have to, I don't know if you're going to do it through a PUD, or if you want to, you know, do it through an actual, like a C4 or whatever, or C1A. But we were going to do it to where we don't want to develop this piece.
Right.
Into other areas that have had some of these things come in.
Yeah, we're going to build in that language for the, most likely under the primary and secondary uses, and probably call out uses that that wouldn't be allowed. Kind of did that with the Form-based code, if you remember that. We had a lot, very flexible, but there are certain uses that we called out, but they're blanked because we don't want those. They're not allowed in any of the Form-based code.
Well, like a car wash is provisional now, but we don't want a car wash.
Driving restaurants, car washes, we talked about.
Mobile and temporary sales is a temporary, we don't want that. You know, I went through the zoning thing. I'm not sure we even want a drive-through restaurant, like another McDonald's or something up there. You know, we don't. So I think it's important to say when we're going to do this, if we're going to do it this way, and get an approval on the first step, that we're going to follow through. So how long does it take to do this land use?
Again, we said we're not going to wait to do the overall city future land use for the comp plan. So I'm hoping that within the next month, we'll probably have the future land use category language prepared for a review by everybody. And then again, we'll probably try initiate some meetings with property owners to be proactive, since this is a little bit different than this, since we're, this would be a city-initiated. So what staff's proposing is for this to be a city-initiated future land use comp plan amendment, a new category. So the applicants, they wouldn't have to submit, apply, and pay for that. We'd be initiating this, and we're creating the new future land use category and going through all the processes that we normally do.
All right, but the land use won't get down into specifics about the zoning or the uses? So do you have a timeframe on when you're going to, how are we going to, how are we going to word or do the?
The uses that we don't want?
The zoning and the uses, right.
Again, I think we can get pretty specific, kind of almost like we did in the Form-based code. Again, I made a note of this, and Tammy and I will talk about it, but what we did, again, the Form-based code, we had T3, T4, T5 districts, got a use table, and we got uses that are permissible.
Yeah, I have this, I mean, that you printed out for me, the zoning and all that. But I want, I want to, I kind of want to guarantee that these things will be.
Yeah.
I don't want to start the process and approve something when some of the other things aren't in the.
When we come back with, with the proposed plan, again, we could have a table, just like we did for the Form-based code, where you call out the uses that we're not in favor of having in this, in this planning area. So we can do that.
If I may, anything that would come before us, they're not just going to be able to put in what they want, they have to bring it to us first.
Again, we're going to be a little more specific in here in what's allowed, and then more importantly, what we're talking about now is what's not allowed.
What I, that's what I'm trying to get at, that we want the zoning specified, so they don't have to come back. If it's set out, then.
And if you remember when we did Tibbetts, on Chancy Road there, I'm not sure if you were here, Steve, when that came through, but that was Zone PUD. And they got light industrial, they're going to start their manufacturing in the back. But along the front, it was Zone PUD, you know, same thing. We identified the uses that were permissible. Only these uses are allowed in this frontage in the industrial corridor that we were okay with. Staff, Planning Commission, City Council, all identified what those uses were that we were comparable with, and it could be something similar to that.
That will wait for somebody to come in and try to develop it, correct? What I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, can we do a zoning or something that it sets it out now? So they don't have to come back and negotiate a PUD or something. It'll say right here, this is Zone C1A. These are the permitted uses. End of story.
Again, our thought was to have better control, that it would be a PUD or Plan Unit Development District. And that way, because the problem, you go with straight zoning, all I have to do is, okay, you look at the use, and these uses are permissible under this zoning category, but then that's where you lose the control after that. I mean, you got minimum standards, different things that are approved, but with a PUD, that becomes the code, and you're going to have to meet all these qualifying criteria that we've been talking about. So it's PUD, but then we have a say in how that, what it is, what it looks like. Any conditions we want to apply, we can apply to it.
So how does a realtor sell this property? Is it still Zone multifamily then, until somebody comes in with a PUD?
Let me, let me jump in real quick. Are we talking about the eight and a half acres? Or are we talking about the entire site?
Talking about the entire site.
Okay.
All right, so if I'm a realtor, and I'm going to come in and say, I want to buy some of this multifamily residential, is that what it's zoned, and then I do the PUD?
I think we can be proactive and rezone. Again, just like we're initiating the new future land use, we can initiate a rezoning to PUD. And again, all criteria are going to be set out. These are the permissible uses, and these are the PUD zoning criteria that we want you to meet.
But this is remaining multifamily then, until we do that?
Until we do that, yeah.
Yeah, see, I don't, I don't like that.
Can we even rezone it if the property owner doesn't want to do anything with it? They want to stay the way it is? They can keep it the way it is?
Well, they can. I have a feeling that the property owners, the ones we've talked to, like this idea, because they're going to have more flexibility with uses. Again, this is part of the overall plan for this area is to be more flexible, but still meet qualifying criteria.
Right, but Mrs. Purvis has come in here and said, I'm a realtor, I can't sell this property because it's Zone multifamily on 301. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's true. And again, that's why we're proposing a new future land use.
Oh, I think we're, we're missing.
Maybe I'm missing something.
So you're, I think we're disconnecting. You're thinking that he's going to leave it multifamily for now until, but he's talking about changing the land code within the next few months.
The land code, yeah, but not the zoning.
And the zoning at the same time?
No, not the zoning.
Well, the future land use would have to be done first, and then we can come back and file through with the zoning.
Not doing zoning when he comes in?
Yeah, but you can't rezone somebody's property for them. I mean, they have to come in and apply for rezoning.
Yeah, again, that's where we have the discussions with the property owners. We share with them, yeah, we, I don't think we can force them to do it.
They've been here asking us to rezone it. They said they can't sell it this way.
And that's why we're going to prepare a new future land use category that will allow what they want to do. Right now, they can't do what they're allowing, wanting to do because of the current future land use and the zoning. This new future land use category is going to allow what they're wanting to do.
Why are we rezoning the neighborhood commercial district? Why don't we make that a PUD as part of it?
Well, we haven't initiated this yet. And my understanding is, what I was told, and what staff moved forward was, we're not holding up the Warnaker petitions. They've been in for a, coming up a year, we're going to allow those to go forward. But at the same time, we're going to, for the rest of the property, we're going to establish a new future land use category.
And Todd, why wouldn't this be PUD? Why wouldn't this be going to PUD, I guess?
Well, we'd have to start all over, it's going to be another three, four months.
So, so they, I mean.
Again, we can address the conditions, as we've talked about, under the resolution. We can't apply them to the rezoning. It's contract zoning. But with the conditional use, we have and we can provide the conditions for this project.
But also, this parcel's below 10 acres, I think, right? So.
Yeah.
PDs have to be at least 10 acres? PDs have to be at least 10 acres, correct?
This property's below 10 acres, I think we require PD to be at least 10 acres.
This is going to just be one with some.
Neighborhood commercial with a resolution.
And the applicant understands that you've been in contact with them?
Yes, we're very much in favor of moving forward.
And this will fall under that same land use category that the rest of it will? Or no?
I think that was our intent, that we'll, when we make the proposed change, we'll, again, talk to the property owners, but our idea is to allow the applicant to move forward with his rezoning and the conditional use. But what we'd like to do is just consider the whole area. I think one of the questions we had was, what happens if the hotels five years down the road don't happen? We don't anticipate that to be the case, but that was one thought that we had, was to include them in. I mean, if we move forward with the rezoning and the conditional use, they're allowed to move forward, but we thought of including them in the, the new comp plan area.
Want to say that if the hotels don't happen within five years?
Well, that was just an example. You know.
What's the rush? If they don't, they might not be done, then we could do the whole thing as a plan.
And they're going to have, they're going to have their conditional, I mean, it runs with, it's tied with the land, so there's not like a timetable that we probably have to be concerned with.
So Todd, the conditional uses that you're proposing on this will, will coincide with the same new category you're setting up?
Yeah, again, when we had the discussion on the new future land use category, we had general discussions about the hotel, and everyone seemed to be okay with the hotels. If it was, if the rest of the area built out to some of the examples and criteria that we were talking about, then everyone seemed to be okay with it. So we were, my understanding told to move forward with the petitions for the hotels, and move forward with the creation of the new category.
So this was your way to go ahead and move forward with the same conditions that we're going to put on that, the area?
Correct.
Okay.
What is the land use for the neighborhood commercial?
Are you residential urban? Which a hotel can obviously be considered.
Okay, so does everyone kind of understand what we're talking about here?
A little bit different than normal.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that point up, that what you're saying, Councilman Smith, about that neighborhood, if something was to happen, it was sort of, we're kind of following along what we're going to do with the rest of the property anyway, so.
Yeah, no standards. Whether their project goes through, or someone else down the road, we'll have those conditions that are tied to that resolution.
And one other thing I wanted to bring up again, so, and tonight, we're just talking about rezoning just that one corner there.
Eight and a half acres.
But the applicants are aware that some of the stuff that we discussed was, we're looking for the right product, too. In other words, you know, it's still going to come before us. That it's going to be something that we can all agree upon, that we envisioned for that.
Can I speak for a second? Just want to be clear, what's proposed is a ordinance rezoning this particular parcel to C1 commercial, neighborhood commercial. So whatever is permitted use in that zoning, they can do. The conditions only apply if they want to go higher than what the code allows. They've asked for a conditional use to build in excess of what our code allows, and we're able to put conditions on that approval. But if they don't want to build above that, those conditions don't apply.
They don't want to build above that?
Above that, if they don't want to go above, if the height's not an issue.
Correct.
The conditions are pointless. They don't, there are no conditions then. The conditions only apply if they build something in excess of what our code allows.
But in order for us to approve that condition, then we could be saying, hey, this is what we're looking for, correct?
Sure, if they go to build something for stories.
Right.
But if they go and want to put in, I don't know what else is in commercial one off my head.
If they want to put a fast food restaurant, if they want to put a convenience store, if they want to put in a car wash.
If something else, well, I don't think, no, I don't think any of those fall under.
Neighborhood commercial.
C1, I think those are all C2.
I have it right here. It's a special provisional use, so we could approve a car wash in a C1.
You could, but you, you could apply.
That would go to Planning Commission also.
Yeah, that's not automatic.
A convenience store is a permitted use. So you could get a racetrack up there with gas stations and all that.
Oh, does gas include in that?
General retail sales.
I don't believe gas, gas stations aren't.
Well, convenience store.
Must be one without gas, because I looked at that, I didn't think gas was included.
I think gas stations do have a specific definition, and it's in there.
Gas, the store without the gas.
One we did on Fort King, right by Simon's Road, remember that came through? They wanted convenience and gas, and we said no gas. We didn't like the location for that to be a gas station there.
But yeah, what, whatever's under C1 that's a permitted use, you know, if it's a special use or a conditional use, it'd come back before you, but, you know, the conditions that we're going to put in the resolution for the next meeting are only going to attach to what their project is if they exceed the height.
So you're going to put conditions in this at the next meeting?
We're doing a resolution simultaneously, but we can't pass the resolution, the conditional use resolution, before we rezone the property. So we'll bring this back for the second reading, and as soon as we do the second reading, if it's approved, we'll put before you a resolution with conditions approving additional height, but also adding the conditions.
We'll try to share those conditions prior to the meeting, and if you have any comments or input to myself or the applicant, we'll, happy to talk about them.
It happened at the same meeting?
It happened immediately after the passing of the second reading.
Okay.
But if for some reason it doesn't pass, we're going to pull that resolution, because we're irrelevant without the zoning.
Right, and I believe we have a citizen signed up to speak to this item, so we'll let them.
Sir? Michael Bremmer?
Michael? Okay, if you could state your name, name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your comment.
I'm not ready actually to make a comment. I was hoping to hear what the scope of this project is going to be, as I am the next-door neighbor. Mike Bremer, new to your community, just dropped a quarter of a million dollars into your neighborhood. I understand that I am one property on the other side of the city in Pasco, and I think that this project leans up against my property line. So I would like to hear what, at least in a Reader's Digest version of what the proposal was, and then perhaps I'd like to speak, if that's possible.
His is, his is right adjacent.
I think I'm right at the top of that red box.
Yes, he's actually right, if you, the Tarabella. Yeah.
Is the motel?
The hotel, right up there. Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, please.
Yeah.
You know, I don't need every detail, but just to.
Yeah, so the neighborhood commercial district there, you see in red, that's the eight and a half acres we're speaking of tonight. So the northern boundary would be your southern boundary, I believe, of your property. So there's also.
Loans down here.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Florida Villas is right across the street, existing mobile home park there, where you see some mobile homes there, right to the left.
Big development over there.
Yeah, and that's Trotters, that's rental single-family homes that is under construction. So yeah, if you're right to the north there, two hotels are planned in the red area, running north-south. Townhomes are to the right of that, in that yellow area, and there is a proposed access road on the north side that would provide access.
So does that access road run along my property line?
Yes, it would. Be like right here. And Dairy Road here is going to continue all the way north here. Yeah, that's what I was just referring to.
And how, how high are they looking to go?
Uh, four stories. Townhomes are two stories over there.
And a totally selfish question, are they bringing, uh, the sewer down?
Yeah, water and sewer would be provided to all this development.
I just hooked up to your water, but it was a sewer connection, because I have on four acres there, and I have plans to expand right now, and we have a ten-room hotel and a couple of RV sites, um, but we're looking to, we're looking to do 51 combination units, whether they're.
Oh.
Luxury RV sites and, uh, traditional hotel rooms with a resort pool and blah, 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 the food truck, bar.
Nice. If you wanna, uh, I can give you my contact information, I can meet with you individually, I can show you some concept plans that are for us.
Is there anybody from the project here?
Yes, the representative, yeah, okay?
All right, cool, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Um, anybody else have anything for Todd? All right, then, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we pass business item 2.1 on the first reading.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve, uh, ordinance number 1498-25 on the first reading, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 4 to 0.
Uh, I have one more question, Mr. Attorney. Um, when will we get a copy of what those conditions are?
Uh, we're, we have a draft, I can, we can send you after the meeting, but we're kind of still going back and forth with, um, the applicant's counsel and hammering those out right now. So I can send you the draft version for your comments, and then we can take your feedback as we go through on this week.
Couple of them came from the applicant, from Mr. Johnson, but then staff, we have a few others that we're working on, so I can provide those to you.
You send me the updated list, and I'll get it to council.
Yeah, because I think, you know, I, I think that the resolution will be there, but I think it's important before we approve a second reading that we know what the conditions are.
That's why I was suggesting we'll get those to you early in advance, so you know what they are, and if you have any comments or input, you can share that with me and the attorney.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and city manager's report.
Chief Fruer.
Oh, sorry.
Derek Burr, police chief, city as everyone knows. So I have strategically not, um, offered a PowerPoint presentation to expedite any comments you might have on the safety plan. I am going to assume y'all have read the memo that is in your packet on this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, does anybody have any question for chief? I did read it, and, uh, I think it's, I think it's something that's probably necessary, so.
Absolutely.
I, I have a question, what is, uh, the, the CP?
SEPTED.
SEPTED principles are those one to six that you lifted there? So who is a certified SEPTED practitioner?
So Sergeant John Olson just completed the certification process, so he can now certify any, um, construction as being SEPTED compliant.
In our department, then? You'll do it in-house, basically?
Correct.
And you'll do all parks?
We will, and we'll do them quarterly as well.
So you'll do.
So we're gonna submit our findings to staff and to you. That way you know what, what we're doing on a consistent basis, and if there's recommended changes, you'll know what we're recommending.
This'll be in terms of additional lighting, perhaps?
Absolutely.
Fencing?
Correct.
Um, access points, things like that?
Line of sight issues, yep.
And you're, you're talking about every one of our parks?
That's correct.
That's awesome, thank you.
And, um, so I read in there somewhere about, kind of like, about talking about walking a beat, so are, are there gonna be an opportunity for us to get out and actually do that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we've been doing it.
Okay.
And in fact, when we're, when we've initiated it in the parks, they actually have a log that they have to fill out for data collection purposes, so we have an idea of, um, what might need to be fixed, what, what issues are we seeing in the park, um, when we do our walk, uh, walkthroughs? So, yeah, they, and they have to submit that log to, um, through the chain of command, and then we evaluate the data we're finding and help us determine what, uh, efforts, if any, need to change or be added.
Um, could I, and I had kind of been in conversation with staff about this, because I was concerned about the, the homeless, yeah, how do I put this? Are, are residents not feeling safe sometimes? Because some of the homeless people do have some mental issues and they'll be ranting, so, so I've been talking in conversation, and I was just, and I'm glad we're doing this, and I thought, just think this is one part of it, I think that every one of our departments needs to think about ways that we can enhance the enjoyment of our residents in our parks. I mean, is, like the cameras, uh, you, you know, I think that's a great idea. Uh, up at Gainesville, they have these blue light call boxes, and I think about along the path in Zephyr Park, you know, where if somebody, you were in trouble, you could run there, sometimes you can't fumble with your phone, you run there and grab it, and it immediately calls 911. Lighting, how do we, how do we report if there's a light out? A, a citizen sees a light out, how do we know who to call? You know, is there a signage, is there a signage, uh, can we run a campaign of signage that we can make sure everybody knows where to call? So, I mean, and I think this is like a multi-department effort, it needs to be, so.
And if I can add, the, the light out, um, I think we can do a better job of, of promoting the C-click fix.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the complaint, uh, I shouldn't say complaints, issues that, that we see for like potholes and things like that, they are C-click fixes, and it does go to, in that case, goes to Public Works, Public Works submits them, um, to Duke, or whoever the, the appropriate person is. So I think that's something we can look at.
Same thing if somebody saw an unsafe swing set or something like that, you know? The public is our best eyes out there, because they're out there a lot more than we are. And I'm assuming that when we do this, and I'm, I'm sure Shane has this, that they go through probably and do some type of a safety evaluation on a weekly basis or whatever, and there's reports and pictures, because that can be very helpful if you have a litigation.
Actually just had our insurance company, um, come out last two weeks ago, um, and assessed all the playgrounds, or actually, excuse me, all the parks. So there were some recommendations and suggestions that were made there as well.
And I just think that's something that we need to, we have, have documentation on, have images, have a report that somebody is, is taking care of. I mean, the, and IT should be thinking about this, where's Panic at, he's back there, not even, not even paying attention. But IT, it can be something with an iPad, you could go out there and just click pictures, and you've got a form, and it, you know, we've got to use technology to help us. So, I mean, I, 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 I appreciate what you're doing, and I think we just need to keep pushing it, because, uh, the park's being used tremendously, and we're gonna.
And, uh, the best measure that, of a safety plan is the use of the park. And really, the SEPTED principles are meant to create that ownership of residents that use the park. To help, because obviously Shane's crews, the officers, they can't be there all the time.
Right.
So it's really, it's about establishing that sense of ownership so that they can be our eyes and ears.
Well, and, and you're, you're exactly right, because we don't want somebody, we want to make it as easy for them with C-click fix or however. To report an issue and not be scared to be like, oh, well, you know, that guy's coming again, I gotta leave. We want them to say, no, this is my park, I'm gonna call and report an incident and, and, and make sure something's done about it. I, when we were at the opening, I saw a lady not cleaning up after her dog, and so I walked over and talked to her a little bit about it, but it wasn't a great confrontation, but anyway, um, you know, that, that was, that's a part that we take ownership in, I don't like that, that's just like my lawn, don't do that in my lawn, so.
Exactly. But I can tell you that part of our safety plan, I didn't include it in the memo, but is targeted enforcement, and leash laws and, and escriment pickup is one of those ordinances that we plan on, uh, putting strategic enforcement on to include, um, you know, not picking up after yourself.
Right.
Littering, um, that type of thing, and signage is a big part of making sure people are aware.
You know, a, a, and, and if we can get, get the citizens to self-police, you know, to like, that's gonna make everybody's job a whole lot easier. But I appreciate the effort, and I know we're gonna continue to work on this, too.
And, and I have a question, chief, do we have like nice bicycles that, you know, I think about like Zephyr Park, right now it's dark, we're open till 10, I guess, whatever over there? You know, if something's going on and a patrol car rolls up, well, that's gonna disperse. If somebody comes zipping up on a, on a bicycle, you know, maybe in, just there for 45 minutes or something, you, you might be able to, uh, help police things there.
The, the bikes are, I have them, they are functional. The unfortunate part is, is finding the training. The training on those bicycles is extremely, um, hard to find, and it's, um, it's pretty tough one as well, it's one that not everybody signs up for because of the physical aspects of it. But it is something that is in my plan, part of the safety plan, um, but I just gotta find the training. But yes, that'll be a big part of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it's a great, great thing we need to do, and just like Councilman Smith said, and we, you know, we want, we've got 18,000 residents, plus all the surrounding people that use our parks, there's the ones that we need to be concentrating on, so, um, and making it safe and clean and, um, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Billy, or is just that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, mayor?
I just have one question. I know when this park, Hercules Park, was talked about and done, um, was there a logical reason why it's not fenced in? I'm just curious with the, with the, all of the, the area in the back with the trees and that, I just, I just personally am asking the question of, is, is there a way, or could it, or should it be so at midnight, there's not people hiding in those woods out there?
I will tell you, we've done our, um, initial, um, review of that park, and restricted access is one of the items on there. And I will tell you, it's one of the things that I brought up early in the process, um, but I'm, obviously, I don't, I don't, I don't do the park, I don't.
I understand that.
Um, I just make the recommendations, uh, but I can tell you, restricted access is a big part of maintaining the security and safety of those parks.
And, and I feel strongly on that level with, especially in this park here.
It's wide open.
It is wide open, and you've got those restaurants and Wawa and all of those 24/7, where it's going to be very difficult to make sure that there's not things going on in those woods that we don't want going on. That were going on prior to us building.
And there's, there's lighting issues in those same issues.
And I brought that lighting up from day one, we cut out, when we had to cut out money, that was the thing that we cut out was lighting, and I, I was told that if there was any money left, we would put lighting back in. I haven't seen more lighting in there, but.
There's no money left.
I get it, but.
Well, I think we also talk about running conduit or something, so we can future, future.
They were supposed to have run all that, so we could add the lighting. But the lighting, I'm with you on this, safety is, is key, the last thing I want is anyone hurt in this brand-new park.
But, you know, fencing is only gonna keep out the good people. The, the people that you're talking about are, are gonna come in at midnight, they're gonna get in there, climb over anyway, I think, so.
They're gonna climb a fence anyways.
Now, I would like to see some of the tree lights that we talked about down the road, we can add things, I think, as we go, um, but.
I tend to disagree, um, only because law-abiding citizens are gonna be in the park when it's open. And I, I think some restricted access, yeah, might keep out some, um, maybe not all, but I think it does limit access and limit the opportunity for crime to occur.
And I also think it will give your, your police officers that ability to say, you shouldn't be in here, it's locked down, it's after 10, you shouldn't be in here.
Right.
If you see that, listen, I'm, you know, I'm a woman, I'm sorry, I look at things a little bit differently.
See, right.
Because I'm a woman, and I'm out at dark, but I want.
I think it's universal.
Yeah, so, um, and I understand aesthetically, it's not what maybe some people.
It's interesting, none of our parks have fences around them. I mean, think about Zephyr Park, Veterans, uh, Cruzeon, really, none of them, so, um.
Cruzeon does.
I think we talked about it way back during the planning process, and I think cost is an issue, you know, chain link's not allowed in the CRA, so we'd have to look at some kind of rod iron or something, $2 million fence, so.
It doesn't even necessarily have to be fenced, I mean, there are other options.
I just wanted.
I have some recommendations.
Yeah, I'm just, I didn't want to open a can of worms, but I knew I was gonna open a can of worms, so I just, um.
I agree with you.
Wanted to throw that one out there, that's all I, thank you, chief, that's, that's, I, I am happy with the park, I'm excited about the park, I think it's gonna be, you know, I've talked to many of people that are coming from Wesley Chapel over with their mommy groups already to visit the parks, um, the parks, so I'm, I'm very happy with it, and I wasn't trying to throw a negative on there, I just want to ask questions.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, city manager?
All right, I just, uh, have two, the tennis center, I've sent you updates, I've sent council updates on the tennis center and, and the progress that's being made there. And then also, uh, a thank you to Stewart Middle School, the NJ, NJHS, uh, kids, they had a trash-a-thon, uh, they collected over 27 bags of garbage, uh, throughout the city, so thank you to that group for going around, taking the initiative to, to help clean up their community.
Sounds good. City attorney?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll get with Todd tomorrow after a department meeting and get a draft set of those conditions out to you all some point tomorrow to start reviewing, so if you have feedback, you can get it to me and Todd directly by email, it'd be great.
All right, thank you. Uh, city council, I'll start down there with Councilman Smith.
I just have one thing, I, I saw that the JR OTC is gonna be cleaning up the cemetery. I think, don't we usually give them a little cash to help them buy supplies or do something?
Uh, we've typically bought them supplies, but they did not ask for any assistance this time.
If they ask, I, I would think we should give it. Thanks.
Uh, all I have is that, you know, the, um, the Pigs in Z Hill event was, was really good, I can't believe the turnout, and everyone involved did a great job. It was a really nice day there, and that's all I have.
Can I interject, can I just add one thing? If anybody would like to see, um, what a professional hog caller looks like, I have that picture on my phone. So I, I won't say who it is.
How much is that picture gonna cost me?
I'm just saying, if you want to see a professional.
Councilman Smith?
Uh, yes, thank you. A couple of things I want to recognize, we have a, our mayor, Gene Whitfield, is right here, we're glad to have him back listening, and then we have a former councilperson, uh, now Judge Compton back there, so we're very, very glad to have them here. Always good to see these guys. And they're glad they're not up here, because they're, they can get, they, they're very glad. A couple of things, I, I was looking back through my emails to see about Hercules Park, and we started, my first email I had was March 12th of 2012, that was almost 13 years ago, so that's how long this thing has been going on, but what a great thing, and, and through that, we had six, six different mayors, three different city managers, and only seven councilpeople, so that's pretty stable council, I think, so, um, but that, that was kind of interesting. The, the other thing is, again, I had said at the, at the CRA meeting, this, this part turned out fantastic, and that's, that, we're doing a city yard, that thing needs to be fantastic, we need to do the same level of excellence in everything we do, you know, or, or don't do it, really, that's, that's, that's what I think, so. And the other thing, too, is y'all have me for another four years, whether you want me for another four years, whether you want me or not. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. That's all.
Can I say something to what he said? He said it started in 2012, and I just would like to note that people in this community have been working to preserve that property since the 1980s. I remember Libby Peal Winslow going to school board meetings, city council meetings, to put out the word that that was left for children and not to, not to, not to sell it, which the school board wanted to sell it. And I think a lot of it was her efforts, the Zephyr Hills News, Bernie Wickstrom. There's a lot of old timers here that most of us don't remember anymore that really fought to preserve that land. And I took a picture of that on the David Open and sent it to Libby's son. He lives in New York. You know, I'm so proud, because really, it started in the 1980s, and it took us to 2025. That's what it takes sometimes. Anyway, thank you. I just.
Yeah, and I.
So, I, because my, you said none of the parks are fenced in. I get that, right? But I don't think we've ever put in a level of park like this, where it could be damaged easily, right? We've never put a $7 million park in. So that's, that's maybe where my mind was wrapping around to.
Well, I just would hate for it to look like an institutional prison.
No, and I get it. And it shouldn't look like that, but just wanted to throw that.
Okay. I do want to say that Hercules Park, you know, I just want to echo what everybody said. It's turned out really great, and it's just being used beyond belief right now. Every time I go by there, it's just packed. The one thing I just wanted to quickly bring up was, the lady who spoke, she's not here now, but Leanne Jensen, I believe her name was, she kind of got up here, and I'm not sure exactly what she, where she was going with it, but I don't believe that anybody here, I mean, I think she was here last week or last meeting. We were very responsive to her. I don't think anybody here on council, I don't think anybody in staff is like kind of putting up a brick wall for her if she comes up or anything. So I'm not sure where she was going with that, but I just want, I want everyone to know that, you know, we love hearing things from the, from the community. It's only, sometimes the only way we know what's going on out there was some of the concerns. So I hope everybody will never feel like they can't come up and speak to us or call into the city about anything. So, all right, and that's all I have, and I'll adjourn the meeting.